Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Meringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Present.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, I don't see our scheduled pastor unless he's in the back or somewhere, so I have asked Councilmember Nordhook to give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in the spirit of gratitude for all of the blessings we have here in the city of Granville. We're so grateful for our first responders, for all of our city staff, and all of our residents, and all those who give of their time and talent to make our city the wonderful place that it is. We look forward to the coming spring and all that it offers, and we ask, Lord, that you would just bless all of us here tonight. You would guide this council to act in accordance with your will to serve the common good, and bless all those in attendance, and help the council to hear the wisdom that they have to offer us as we seek to make the right decisions. We pray this in all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it very much. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes, and any opposition, please say no. We have a couple sets of minutes. The first one is our regular meeting, February 27. If you had a chance to take a look at those, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections? If anybody wants to point out? All right. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes. Yes, and any opposition, please say no. Then we have minutes from the special meeting that we had 10 days ago, and we've had a chance to review that, and just wondered, the only thing, I had just one comment, and that was on the appraisal came in at a certain amount. Do we want to clarify that that was just for the dwelling itself and a minor amount of property?
If you want to, yes.
Okay. I don't know. Just, yeah.
Or do we just strike that from the, I mean, do we have to include those details in the minutes officially, or?
I guess, I guess, I guess I would like to add in that, in a bulk paragraph, just after the appraisal for the home and, oh, Matt, what's it, like 11,000?
Quarter acre, I think.
Quarter acre or something like, I don't know.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think it was.
I guess I just kind of like, I feel a little bit better with that.
Makes sense.
And of course, the purchase includes six acres of property, which was very hard to appraise because there is no comparable, really. So, okay.
Motion to approve of that.
Thank you.
Minor change.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposition, please say no. Great. Then we have presentation of bills tonight, an amount just under $400,000. Dennis, is there anything you'd like to point out that you haven't already pointed out? Memo? Okay. Jane, anything you?
Council, any questions about any of the bills, any of those items?
If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $397,064.20?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Any other comments or questions? If not, Marcy, you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. First item is a presentation by the Environmental Sustainability Committee, which has been busy this year, and I'm looking forward to the update and to express my appreciation too for helping me get rid of all the cardboard that I have, and for Councilmember Vanderwall for serving on the committee as well. So, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So, we just have a very short presentation. We're going to go over who we are, who the committee members are currently, what we did in 2022, what we're going to do in 2023, and then answer any questions you have. So this is, this is the Fab Seven. I wish I'd come up with a better name than that. So, there's still Jason, Catherine, and I, and then we've added Jason Cronkite and Mitch Leachman to our group, and then Aaron Afringa has been there for a couple of years, and then, of course, the wonderful JR. So in 2022, our focus was, it just occurred to me, I changed this presentation a little bit, and this is the changed one, but that's okay. So, our general focus, that's not just a 2022 focus, it's a general focus that we want to advise the city council and other community committees about sustainability issues, advise the city on best practices, seek opportunities for collaboration, lead sustainability initiatives within the community, resource share and educate the community on all the resources we have and building community, and then figuring out how to do some annual reporting around benchmarking and where we've been and where we're going. So last year, at a glance, we used the city's digital resources, and we created an Environmental Sustainability Committee Facebook page in hopes to widen our reach. We connected with city departments, committees, and other resources in the community. We welcomed Jason Cronkite and Mitch Leachman to the group. We earned the Michigan Green Community Bronze Award. We are, we worked towards getting the Silver Award for Michigan Green Communities, and then we hosted three cardboard and foam recycling events. So, this is one of the slides that has changed. So we, in the foam recycling events, we did three of them, one in April, October, and December. All three of them, we were partnered with Harbor Foam, but the April one, we partnered also with Goodwill Industries, and we included textiles and electronics. That ended up being a lot of coordination and a lot of, just a lot of extra things to deal with. So the October and December events just focused on cardboard and foam. We had really good attendance, lots of engagement around it. And what's on the other modified slide is that in the December event, we had 39 vehicles, I think we did 48 pounds of foam, and 800 pounds of cardboard. So that was really successful. And so Jason's going to talk a little bit about the Bronze Award.
So, the chart here shows, the dark green is what we submitted this time last year, and what earned us the Bronze Award. So this is like progress within each of these categories. So, My Green Communities focuses on sustainable efforts in different categories, inclusive and lasting impacts, climate, energy, materials, land use, health, protecting conserving water, mobility, and inspiring and mobilizing residents. So the light green is what we've been working on since the last time we presented. We're not yet at the point where we will qualify for Silver. We've made a lot of tremendous progress. We will maintain, we'll be submitting this week for the work that was done in 2022. So we will maintain our Bronze level for another year, and we'll continue to work on achieving Silver next year.
And so, shifting into 2023, we have two, two events planned for this year. One is falls on Earth Day, the morning of Earth Day, and then one is shortly after the holidays on December 29th in the afternoon. We'll again partner with Harbor Foam. It will be in their parking lot, though, as you all know, they have a lot of construction. So hopefully we'll be in the same location, but that'll depend on what they can do, and then we'll just do cardboard and foam. And so the, a slide that is not in this presentation is that we, Mitch here, has extensive experience with native habitats, native plants, and so he has done some research around seed packets. And so we would like to offer anybody who's interested, who comes to our recycling event on Earth Day, seed packets with native wildflowers and grass, and we need some funding to provide that, and so we're asking for about $150 to do that. And so with $100, we can buy enough seeds to make 75 packets, and then we'll need to purchase the little packets themselves, because we'll have to package them ourselves. We'll have to buy little envelopes for packaging and then instructions, and so that, we estimate that'll be about $150 to make that happen. So that is, that is the request. I can write that more formally out, but that's what it is. And then for Silver.
Yep. I think the next slide is still here, so I think, we really went over this already, that we will maintain Bronze for 2022 and focus our work in 2023, continue to focus on achieving Silver for next year. I did write down some, some key items in those categories, on areas where we've improved or, or need to improve more. Within the inclusive category, a lot of what's left on the table has to do with policy adoption by municipal staff and operations. Climate, again, very similar, but also reporting on things like greenhouse gas emissions. So we've begun the steps of tracking utility usage, populating. Energy Star maintains a website dashboard called Portfolio Manager, so that's commonly used. So we've begun the process of tracking. Next is reporting, so that's what's left on the table still. A lot of the health category we see is largely outside of the scope of our group. Land use, you know, JR and I are able to bring some of that to the Planning Commission that we both serve on, so adopting more environmentally friendly ordinances. And, you know, we recognize a lot for the water category through all the great work at the Clean Water Plant, and through some of the private groups like Friends of Buck Creek.
Yeah, and so a lot of what we've done so far is just, is the low hanging fruit. And so now it's the big, now we'll get into bigger projects.
And the next phases are far more difficult to achieve. You know, point totals, there's probably, if everything on the list, and not all of which can Granville do, there's over 200 possible points. Bronze is like 20 of those. Silver is 60, gold is 100. So the steps do get incrementally more difficult to progress.
And some of them we can't even, it would be impossible to do since we don't have municipal trash and recycling, for example. Like, it's very hard to do benchmarking and reporting around that because you're dealing with multiple private entities to do that, so. So some other initiatives we have, we really want to use our, use digital media, so the city's website, and also the Facebook presence to really increase awareness, share resources, and, and build community. We want to also continue to establish relationships with other sustainability communities, committees, and community partners, so Wimyak, Elgar, Hope Gardens, and then Rockford has a very active sustainability committee, I believe Kentwood does as well. And those are, those are maintained by appoint, like either volunteers or appointed people like us versus, like the city of Grand Rapids, they have a whole staff, and that's just the big leagues compared to what, what we'll be able to do here. And then also, we want to continue to serve as a resource for the council, city staff, and the committees, and other city committees to wait on relevant sustainability issues. And so that is another ask we have, is that as you are all sitting in on committee meetings and you hear of things that come across your desk, like where can we plug in? Because I think that's where we can make a bigger impact, and it will help us work towards the Silver and the, and Gold for Michigan Green Communities. And that's it.
Good. Well, thanks for a great presentation. I'm just impressed at how much you've accomplished over a pretty short period of time, including worldwide pandemic that we had, so I don't know, you probably couldn't even meet for a while.
Yep.
But thank you both so much. I do have a question. So, the seed, seed bombs, is that a request to the city? And Dennis, how, I mean, if we would?
Yes, so that, yeah, that would be a request for funding for the city.
How do we run those?
Jane will manage that and help the committee to understand how we would pay those bills.
Okay.
But being that it's only $150, we can handle that administratively.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Just real quick, and guys, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but it's a pretty big deal to have even a Bronze status. How many rough communities are there that have achieved any status, do we know?
Forty-four.
Total, in the entire city.
In Michigan.
Yeah. So, to put that in perspective, that's a pretty big deal. So, we've worked very hard for this, so. I knew you had the numbers, Jason.
And I think it's important to people, too. This is a thing that adds to the quality of life in a community, is people working on these things.
So first of all, thanks for everything you guys have been doing. It's great work, and it's great to have some new people joining you as well.
Yeah.
Curious about the item that you mentioned about, and I think it was part of the Green Communities, about increasing native, native.
Habitats.
Habitats, or what's involved in that? Or what would that look like? Is that like native plantings, or like dealing with invasive plant species and things like that, or?
Yes and yes. And, and, you know, the committee has spent a whole lot of time with it, and it would be predicated on what the city, you know, what would work within the existing master plan, you know, current zoning, you know. I will just say, because I've been pretty open with Jane and the committee, with all my walking around the community, I just can't help myself when I walk the Buck Creek Trail through the cemetery and go, why are we mowing right up to the creek? So that, that's one very specific little area that just looks like it's waiting for something more water friendly, more stormwater friendly, and then also, of course, it would provide habitat if it was not just mowed grass. So again, it kind of fits in the low hanging fruit category.
And I think that's also, it's a good opportunity to build community around, this is how you plant for native habitats, and here's how it benefits right, right in the community, this is how it improves water quality, this is how it, X, Y, Z, other things. And previously, like, we didn't have the expertise of someone like Mitch on the, on the committee to really spearhead, and I spearheaded that. And so that was mostly a last minute add because we've just received this, we've just been, Mitch has just been added to the committee, and therefore, that resource has just been added.
Yeah. No, that's great, because we've had some previous conversation about Buck Creek watershed protection and things like that. And so we also have a couple of park projects going on in the near future, hopefully in that area that you mentioned, by Mill Race, and then hopefully behind the cemetery as well. I did have a resident reach out to me last year about this time, maybe a little bit later, about garlic mustard, and is there anything we can do in the community to help either raise people's awareness of that as an invasive plant, or provide opportunities for people to, you know, pull it and dispose of it properly, that sort of thing? Have you guys had any conversation about that at all? I think, I think I had messaged you back and forth a little bit about it, Jane. It was kind of late in the season.
I think what probably fits best in response to that is, and again, just internal conversations in the committee so far, and Jane highlighted Facebook page, which of course is very new, and the city of course has active Facebook, but, so you have outreach potential, education potential that certainly could be used more for select subjects like that. But also, we have very preliminary discussions about the idea of the committee providing newsletter articles, you know, something of that delta, right? Education and, and.
Raise awareness.
You know, event information obviously goes in the newsletter, I believe March issue has information about the April 22nd event, but taking, you know, a schedule, working with the clerk, working with city staff, you know, what subjects and how frequently might the committee have, you know, articles for, for the community.
Well, great work. I'd love to see you guys tap into some of that stuff over the next year, help with our Bronze. Moving to Silver status, too, it sounds like, so.
Yeah.
Jane, if you, oh, I'm sorry. If you ever had a class on native plantings, I'd sure sign up for that, so.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
Can we have a draft?
Sure. Sure. You could actually come and do some planting.
Yeah, yeah, it's the gardening, yeah.
Some weeds.
Yeah, that's how I get people to come over now. Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about. Jack, haven't seen you in a long time. Have you got any, anything for us tonight?
I don't really think you've got enough time.
I know, we've got a lot of catching up to do.
We do.
Anybody here like to make a public comment, else a chance? Last call? All right. Okay. Next item under the consent agenda, lots of reports, and very good reports, too. I mean, they're always good, particularly good. I enjoyed reading the fire department and the police report this month especially. We have the EMS fire report, the annual report, the police report from February, along with the Treasures February report, historical commission, their minutes from February, the library, February minutes, and the Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, their March minutes. We also have a resolution to set a public hearing on an alley vacation, and there's a map in there, too, just a small strip of land. Done another one just not too long ago. And so that would be, the public hearing on that would be March 27 at 7:15. Also, we have a proclamation for National Arbor Day, something that's required by the Arbor Day Foundation to receive through City USA Renewal. We also have a permit for the Fourth of July fireworks, and approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city, because the next item is senior neighbors a dishwasher. So, for about $6,000, I, there was a memo in there, but I think that was the approximate amount on that. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? So moved.
Support.
Support. Any item anybody'd like to talk about in particular, or have questions about?
I have a question for the chief. I would have asked you this before the meeting, but we ran out of time. Can you tell us briefly what the flock cameras are, and how is it that stuff is on the cameras when we don't have any in our jurisdiction?
A flock camera is a license plate reading camera that a lot of the surrounding jurisdictions have implemented. Besides being able to search on the license plate, you can search on characteristics such as a roof rack, or decals on the rear of the vehicle, decals on the window, or damage. Then you can look at the search criteria from those specific search items. We have agreements where we can access Kent County, Wyoming's, Holland, and a couple of other, a lot of jurisdictions are adding them, and we can do it. We have an MOU, and as long as that agency will share us, share their information with us, we can conduct searches for any of our suspect vehicles. It is an emerging technology here in Michigan, and we are researching, and we are already solving crimes through that technology, even though we don't have them currently in our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Other comments? Chair.
I just want to piggyback on that. Tim, I was looking at those and wondering what flock cameras were, too, and I was most impressed with the fact that we caught somebody stealing $4,000 worth, 4,000 cans from the RoboDogs, that they caught them on those cameras. I mean, that's substantial money for those, for those, those students, so.
They're making an impact. The most recent one that you'll reveal next month was a car pedestrian hit or an accident. Then we were able to pick up the vehicle as it flooded into the city of Wyoming.
Wow.
Good stuff.
Great annual report, too, Chief May. I always enjoy reading that, and just am astounded by the amount of calls and help that you give every year. And Chief Anglom, I thought it was very interesting, this month's report, you had some comments in there about an arrest in the UK, so.
We are making an impact worldwide.
Yeah, yeah, very amazing. So like Scotland Yard, or whoever, I don't know. I, it really caught my eye. I thought, wow, that's, that's pretty, pretty interesting.
Apparently our population can't be victimized by people across the pond. We were lucky in this case that we were actually able to work with some international partners and have arrests.
Yeah, and I think there was a comment in there, too, that you found his home address thanks to his giving out something.
Always third to be liked.
And very interesting. Any other comments about any of the consent agenda items? Did we have, yeah, we had a motion support on that. Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, city managers' report.
First item is a purchase order approval for the police department to replace current garage door opener. The one that will be replaced was damaged and malfunctioned, and it's also over 20 years old, and even though it is not a budgeted expense, there are funds available in the building maintenance line item in that department for $1,983.
Okay. Any questions about that item? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve that purchase in the best interest of the city? Is this grabbed by Dennis?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, anything else?
No, the next item would be a scheduled strategic discussion on the topic of housing, and Matt's going to provide some history for the council to bring us up to speed, because this has been an issue that has been on the list for a while now. So Matt's going to give you a quick summary of that, and then we're just going to open it up for some discussion on where we see housing as an issue going, going now.
Thank you, Dennis. So, I think you've all known about the housing study that was done about five years ago in Kent County, that found Kent County needed 60,000 housing units, just to catch up what I mean. I just recently heard an update of that number, it's 40,000. So Kent County's moved 20,000. That's, that's a great thing. Locally, we have approved the Grant Castle, which is 522 units. Riverdale Commons, which is 408, they're under construction, and then approved the Elderwood PUD, residential PUD, which is 80 units. That's 1,010 housing units that we've approved in the last 10 years. A city that's 7.5 square miles, that's already densely developed, we find a way to add over 1,000 units. That also may include, you know, some of the parcels, double parcels are getting split off, only have a handful of those left. So we've come a long way in five years. You know, why are developers looking at Granville? I've met with two developers, commercial developers, just last week. They love Granville, great schools, you know, three of the elementary schools in Granville's public are Blue Ribbon Schools. Two of those are located within city limits. You know, parents, I was one of those parents, you know, my kids go to a Blue Ribbon School. JR's kids go to that same Blue Ribbon School. It's a great thing. We're also 20 minutes away from the lake shore, and we're 10 minutes away from downtown Grand Rapids. We have state-of-the-art healthcare systems, you know, we're close. They have great services, police, fire, utilities, clean water, great sewer system. We also have high quality of life. Our, our city is walkable, great parks. We're adding parks, we're improving parks. We have great committees, great leadership at the council. Anywhere, if you're anywhere in the city, you're two miles from buying anything you ever need, whether it's jewelry, fishing pole, tent, Maserati, you name it. Everything's available in. Everything's available in Granville. You don't have to leave Granville for a whole lot. So we have a lot going for us. The only thing working against us is we're nearly built out. So we gotta find strategies to help add additional housing. Because it's still a need, especially workforce housing. So as you know, in 2021, December 21, we updated the zoning ordinance. That did a couple of things for us. We referred to that triangle neighborhood between Chicago Drive and 28th Street that allowed other options for residential development. Things like townhomes, higher stories, little fourplexes, eightplexes. North Wilson zoning, that also allowed for things like townhomes. And on 28th Street, multi-story, you know, first floor resident, or first floor, commercial, multi-stories of residential. You know, that's gonna take time. That's gonna take 20, 30 years to get 28th Street where we can fish in. So what do we need to do from here to encourage developers to see our vision? Again, we got a lot going for us now, but we gotta start building those relationships. You know, we have some properties, about three and a half acres on Wallace F., on the north side of Wallace. You know, that was, we got part of that from the schools because they didn't need it. It was supposed to be a soccer field. We gotta donate that to ASO. ASO wasn't interested, wasn't large enough for that. I just did the math this afternoon. You know, we could fit eight to nine houses, just a standard single-family home on those three and a half acres. If you looked at townhomes, maybe double that. So there's a lot of opportunities. You also look at some properties along 28th Street that we have discussed. You know, partnering with the developer, maybe redevelop the grand mark. Start buying properties along 28th Street, start group properties together. We already have the policies in place to do that. We just need the right partnerships. Next steps. You know, I'd like to hear from you on, on what, you know, steps you think needs to happen before we get to that next level on 28th Street, you know, North Wilson, especially that neighborhood in the middle. Because there are some great opportunities there. It just takes the right partnership to make that happen. You know, whether it's a private developer or a nonprofit developer, we have a lot of potential. Now, one need I talked to any developer, I talked to senior living. We do not have a lot of senior living opportunities in Granville. You know, Mayor Buck, Mr. Granville, when it's time for him, that he needs assist living. He had to move out, he had to move to Georgetown to get that. So I think that's one area we certainly could grow in. So beyond that, I'd be happy to be part of the conversation, answer questions you may have.
That's great, Matt. Appreciate what you said. And, and it seems like city's got a pretty good handle on what, what we've done and what we should be doing and what we can do. How does, I, I looked at this, what Dennis said, is how does that whole Kent County concept of, you know, not being a silo, but working as a whole county fit? And how much are you folks relying on Kent County, you know, coordinating and putting together some sequence here?
You know, we're already working with our partners at Kent County. You know, we've always viewed in Kent County, because we are no silos. You go to the east side of the state, there are a lot of silos there. If this, when X-Rite moved out of town, we're okay with that because it needed to move closer to the airport. That meant Granville jobs weren't at stake. They weren't moving to Mexico or, or someplace else that, you know, individuals were losing jobs. So we're happy to, to work with anybody who wants to work with us and make sure we have the housing needs that we need.
Kind of piggybacking on that, I guess I was kind of curious. This was a very interesting presentation with all the details and stuff in there. But how much of this is kind of a regional conversation? Because I mean, you mentioned several things that we've done in the city over the last few years that have addressed housing, you know, various types of housing. But you hear from a lot of people, well, we have so many apartment complexes going up in this area, for example. Several of them are across the border into Wyoming, you know, on the south side of town. So you talk to people around here and they think, well, we've got so many, how can we possibly need any more apartments around here? Because we've got all these new, you know, apartment complexes going up just south of town. It's Granville address, but it, Granville schools, but it's, you know, actually in Wyoming. Do we talk to them about kind of land use and, and plans? They've got a lot of open property further south, you know, whereas we're pretty, pretty built out and landlocked. You go into Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids has been turning in dust, old industrial facilities into apartment buildings and things like that. Some pretty cool housing options there. I'm just curious how much of that is a, is a conversation regionally with, you know, what? Are we sharing information with each other as far as what we're doing? And, you know, kind of planning more regionally versus looking at individual city?
The managers, the mayors meet monthly to have these type of conversations. We're also been working with the Right Place on talking about, you know, attracting some developers to some of the available properties along 28th Street. You know, Tim Maraz, he's one particular property that we're all interested in. He's talked to three different developers now and what it would take to get them involved. As a partnership with the city, you know, that may mean several things. But any developer, you know, they want to know what kind of tax savings can they get? Can they get a pilot? The Genesis Woods project is the only pilot we have, to my knowledge. And for that type of housing, you know, we can make that work. Senior for, certainly for senior housing, I think a pilot would be a great thing for the city.
Because really, when you talk about accomplishments, that you mentioned it, you know, the Genesis project was part of that. The senior living facility on the corner of 44th and Wilson is part of that, really, too. Are you talking to developers that are interested in like residential development, commercial development, both?
A mix.
Mix, okay.
You know, I typically call they have very specific parameters. One, who's a site finder, he's looking for the perfect site. He needed five acres for a car dealership. Granville doesn't have that, five acres. I talked to him about, well, you could start buying up some properties on 28th Street. No, I, I want a green field that I can throw a car dealership, national brand, you know, car dealership on. Well, you know, I gave him some places to look, but I said, unfortunately, Granville's not that place for you.
I've got a question, kind of just to throw out there. Kind of following up on Josh's comments. And I mean, I have my own opinion on this, but is this something that we want in Granville? Do we want to include, increase the housing stock? Do we want more people to move here? I mean, that's kind of a fundamental question and kind of, we're assuming we do. But do we?
Yeah, that's an interesting point, Steve. I was thinking about the same thing. And I had a conversation this weekend about the new 78 building, public schools building that's going up behind Costco. And they said, well, that's new 78s. What happens to 56? Well, they're getting their own building, the old middle school, which was the old high school. Wow, so elementarys are only going to be K through 4. Right. So, you know, they have this vision of this future expansion. I think that, that they're keeping up with our 1,000 X units. But, but how much further do we want to go? How much further can we absorb that? I mean, that's a great question.
It's not a zero-sum game. We can welcome more people here to Granville. I like particularly what you said in your idea, I don't know why I never thought of it before, of us developing housing on the city property on Wallace Street. You know, I was on the market, parking rec board for many years, as you know. We were always trying to think of some, some recreational opportunity for that land. I assume parking rec board still talks about that, never come up with a good idea for it. It's perfectly suited to housing. It would also be perfectly suited to a senior residential living facility. Be almost ideal for that, really.
Yeah.
I think that's a very good idea worth pursuing.
Okay.
We've also been talking internally about the priority of locating housing downtown to create that traffic center. So you're not going to fit a bunch of housing downtown, but if you can get it started and get the momentum downtown, then that will continue to add to more developments. When you, we also would go online and we would back out the, the map a little bit to get maybe a 10-minute radius from Granville, right? Because it's very easy for people to live just outside Granville, but still be part of our workforce. And that's important, too. And so as Matt was saying, we're talking with our neighbors all the time because we want to know what new projects they have on the starting, on the launching pad.
We, to, to the question about the schools, we do have conversations with the schools often. I mean, there are partners in Granville. Like I said, a lot of people are drawn to Granville, not because it has a great council, it's because it has a great school system. So.
And a great council.
There you go.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that, that developer day was kind of a one-of-a-kind that we did. Of course, it was a pouring down rain.
It was.
Kind of a crummy day. But those are the types of conversations when, you know, I was there when those developers were standing around Michigan Moonshine and they said, I didn't know this place existed. I didn't know that there was an opportunity down the street here, opportunity here. In their minds, they're thinking of these old Klingman furniture stores that they want to put, you know, 160 apartments in. They're not thinking smaller scale. And I think that's one great step to, to achieving this, especially in the downtown area. And we're putting some resources towards that area. What can we do to help these conversations go further as council?
There's gonna be a developer day number two. This time it's gonna be an all-day event. We have an opportunity to visit not just one city, like we did this year. You had a choice. There's five cities involved. You gotta chose bus one through five. This year, people are gonna have an opportunity, developers, bankers, engineers, architects, are gonna have an opportunity to visit multiple cities. To really see, again, we had maybe a dozen people on our bus. It was a fun day. But it was, it was miserable weather, so. To see multiple cities. And so, again, we may get some partners to do that program. Great program.
Do you have a date on that?
I do not yet.
Okay.
I can get that and I'll share that with council.
And that's great that we have the opportunity to go to other communities, but so do the developers, which now pits us into a competitive mode. So we have to have our game plan ready to go when we're stepping on the bus so that we can make Granville unique to all the other communities that are trying to get the same thing.
But we use our magic weapon, Teresa. You know, she talks a really good game. As the DDA director now, you know, she's important in these conversations.
That is interesting about the property by East Elementary, that three and a half acres kind of. Isn't there another piece there, too, maybe across the street?
Two parcels, yep.
Is it total three and a half or just the one?
Total three and a half.
Okay.
Between the two pieces.
So that one doesn't seem like it's that much.
Yeah.
It's two parcels.
Well, still, when you talk about senior housing, which can be more dense, or townhomes, or we have the option of the zoning ordinance for bungalow courts, which could be even more dense, but still very attractive condos. You know, you can do six units per acre.
Put you on the spot a little bit, but do you happen to remember how many acres? Well, we've got two planning, other planning commissions, people back there. How many acres the Grand Village site is?
I think there was only two and a half.
Okay.
Right, yeah, yeah, right by East Elementary.
And I mean, there's, there's 80, 90 residents there. And that's, that's not terribly dense, that's one floor.
Housing would be.
There is an economic development webinar that the Right Place is putting on. If, if anybody else did not get that email on March 28, it's a Zoom thing. I can share it. I don't know. I, I, did you get it?
Yeah.
You must have got it. I got it, too. Yeah.
Go on RSVP, let me know and we'll, we'll sign you up.
If you've never spent time with any of those folks, they are.
We get our money's worth for the, what, $6,600 we pay a year?
For sure.
Well, the amount that they do, they make everybody's boat float higher, I think. Even though, you know, sometimes they go, oh, I wish we had that project in Granville. We don't have the room. But certainly, the whole area has benefited.
But it'll pay off someday.
Yeah.
With a huge project.
God, this is kind of a different, I, I'm not sure we've exhausted this area, but I, I do have a question. Included in housing is those who are experiencing homelessness. And I don't know, maybe the chief, one of the chiefs has an idea, like, is that an issue in Granville? How many people are without permanent housing? I mean, are there people living in cars? Are there students at the high school? I, I really don't have a sense of that.
Housing Kent would probably have a really good idea on that number. We can check with them. Chiefs, you got it?
I don't have an exact number, but especially over the winter months, we're aware of some unhomed individuals. And when the temperatures hit a certain point, we always make sure that our road patrol goes out, makes contact and again advises those individuals of the available shelters. Granted, they're all in the city of Grand Rapids, but we do make contact with them and we do have homeless individuals that are residing in our city because they feel safe.
Anybody that's doubled up or sleeping on the couch is also considered homeless, too. And you would have to contact, I think, that's right, the Housing Kent, is it? Or some, some homeless advocacy agency that does some, some studies and polling, not to know exactly.
Yeah, because I don't have a sense of it. I, I have no clue.
Yeah, right, because we don't see them.
Who, who did you mention, Matt?
Housing Kent.
Oh, yeah, and I think, I, I think it's Ms. Putnam, Putnam, who is the principal at East Elementary, is now coordinating for Granville schools the needs of families.
I, I just met with her about 10 weeks ago.
Yeah, she'd have a handle on that.
Yeah. Anna.
She's very impressive.
Yeah, yeah. I was sad to see her leave East, but I think the position she's in now is
Oh, yeah.
She's even got more impact, probably.
Yeah, she does.
So way back when we approved the castle project, there was supposed to be a phase two of Outlots in front there. You know, I mean, that I think was initially intended to be commercial. Possibly that could be mixed use or something. Has there been any activity on that or any discussions about?
No, that was one of the properties we highlighted during developer day with Roger dying and Mary taking over the project. She's more involved right now with just beautifying the project and studying the project. It's a great success. It's 96% occupied. You know, if you know Mary, she's about making things really nice. Often she tells, calls me with the project and I, I don't, I said, don't worry about zoning. Whatever you do, you're gonna make it looking great. I didn't say that in an open meeting, but.
That's why there's knights guarding the gates at the castle.
Mary does a really nice job. So eventually, but she's not working on those items right now.
I mean, as far as development on 28th Street, that'd be a prime location for something, you know, where it's already kind of green space.
Yeah, well, I've heard that, actually. So Matt, is there anything as a council that we ought to be doing to kind of help facilitate this? I mean, I, I think our zoning is in a good spot.
You know, eventually it may come in the form of residential PUDs. You gotta be supportive of that. Pilots, certainly for senior living facilities, or supportive living facilities. Or I've been told that they're communities and not facilities. I gotta remind myself of that. But again, we gotta find those right partners to make these projects work. If you hear from anybody who's interested, let Dennis or I know. We can also bring in other team members from the Right Place to assist us. You know, the question is good that, you know, do we need more growth in Granville? We are built out. But the way we, the master plan you're gonna be seeing next month that Kent has worked on for us kind of mirrors the zoning ordinance about residential develop, mixed residential development in those core areas in northern Granville. So there, I think there is potential for certainly a lot more residential development.
One project that's in Granville, I was on the board for a number of years. It's nonprofit. I think it was started by one of the churches like 40 years ago. It's Grand Heritage, which is subsidized housing for seniors. And I remember at the time that I was on the board, they had such a long waiting list that they cut it off after about three years. So that was, you know, I forget how many people, you know, 30 people or whatever. I mean, is that something that would be beneficial to the city of Granville, another project like that?
Absolutely.
There, it's not a problem project.
No. When, when you talk about senior housing, you talk about multiple levels of senior housing. Right down to, you know, like more Freedom Village to. housing, right down to, you know, like more Freedom Village to, you know, self-sufficient to, you know, need critical care. So, um, you know, ideally, you'd like to see a project that includes all of those items.
There's, uh, some undeveloped property, kind of that transitional property along Old Forty-four Street on the south side there, kind of between the neighborhood on the north side and the restaurants and stuff there, a few parcels there, whatever. I wonder if that would be an area where there would be opportunity for some kind of.
Uh, senior housing.
Senior housing or.
And any type of multifamily is a great transition we use, just zoning wise. You look for office, you look for things like that as a transitional zone.
Or something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a bus route. It's next to, practically next to the bank and the grocery store and, uh, you know, it's.
Just looked at that price tonight and I was, you know, there's five properties for sale, or residential properties for sale, not including Elderwood. Um, and they average three hundred and fifty thousand. That one is averaging more than that.
Which one?
The, the one you're talking about. They want three ninety-four.
Properties for sale?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
That home, the single-family home?
Yeah.
On Forty-four, Old Forty-four?
Yeah.
I was just talking about like the, there's vacant property that doesn't have anything developed on it. That's, I think it's on the, the east side of Potomac.
Yeah.
You keep going that way before you get to the dentist office and stuff there. There's, I don't know who owns it, but.
That's owned by, uh, I think Spectrum Alphonsa.
Part of that, I think, at one point, yeah. But there might be a couple of them, parcels in there, but.
There, there was a transfu, or blood donation transfusion thing that was entrusted and that moved somewhere else.
Yes.
And I think there was like a higher-end grocery that maybe had been interested, but.
We, we talked about that. You know, you think of, uh, Orox or something like that would be, especially in Twenty-Eighth Street.
That property, that's, I mean, back in Jack's day, when Bart Regal put that project down, I mean, that's all, that's a long time ago.
You know, as we talk about the mall too, and perhaps, you know, reimagining what that looks like in the future is, and it's got its own zoning designation, right? The mall's got its own.
It does, and in the master plan, you'll see, um.
Does that include any residential as a possibility there with mixed use or?
It does. Again, it takes what works at the mall, takes out what doesn't work, and then reimagines the whole area.
Because that might be kind of an interesting thing to think about in the future too, you know, lifestyle center, you know, somehow mixed use there with, you know, retail on the bottom and apartments or something on the top, some of those big box stores or, who knows?
It's interesting you say that, Josh, too, because I was part of a conversation too, where some folks at the public school said, well, maybe, you know, they, um, pick up part of that as, um, like a public, uh, aquatics or workout facility, kind of like a Holland Community Center, you know, where you have all this stuff in thing. And, you know, and then when you're done working out or your kids are at a swim meet or whatever, you just go into the mall and you go have shopping, or you go to a restaurant, or around the corner is a hotel that's, that's attached. You know, these malls are becoming more experiential rather than just a destination for, for shopping, right?
Yeah.
So these Outlots, you know, maybe it's, I mean, I'm sure you've got all these thoughts, these conversations, and we, I know we were careful about how to put that into the mall bubble for their future, but to talk about it here, this is, I mean, we gotta be ready for it, right?
Well, we gotta think creatively too, because, I mean, we are realistically, we're landlocked, we're pretty much developed out, we're either talking redevelopment or developing on, you know, the, the little existing green space that we have, which, I mean, we hear from people too, that we don't have enough green space in town and we need more parks and we need, you know, more recreational opportunities too. So you gotta kind of find that balance.
That's also included in the master plan for the mall.
So you gotta reimagine what's already there and how do you maybe use it differently?
Yep.
So come to the master plan, public hearing.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna ask him, when is the date on that?
It got moved to April.
April.
Twelve.
Yes.
The Wednesday.
The, the planning commission's been working on it for, what, a year and a half?
A while.
Well, two years in August, yeah, a year and a half. So.
It's online?
Yeah, it's online. Chris Corey's done an exceptional job for the city. Again, one of his multiple projects is been working on, but, uh, we keep getting impressed by Chris. Just more he takes on, the better it is. Uh, relationship is, is very good between the city and McKenna.
And you'll send us a date for The Right Place.
Yes.
Uh, meeting too?
Yep. Oh, RSVP, okay, let me know.
Comments, thoughts? Seems like a big topic. I mean, you feel like we've moved the ball a little bit?
Yeah. I think, Dennis, were you gonna cover future topics?
In a second. Uh, I, I just wanted to add one thing, that when you're talking about housing, it is also a very large topic that encompasses more than just housing, right? So the city is on the right track in terms of the making Granville a place where people want to be, investing in the roads and your utilities and your parks. We have to stay on that right path and keep investing in those, those amenities for people that want to live here. That in turn then, um, turns Granville on better to these developers and they want to put their money someplace that's successful. So those are all part of the housing discussion in my mind, and we need to keep on the right track there. So, yes, um, I was briefed by, uh, Ken on his last day as he ran out the front door. And he handed me a file folder that had strategic discussions. And in that, he had a list of things that the council had talked about in the past. Marcy has reprinted that for you all this evening. It's in, it's at your place. Um, this is a, a list that was developed by the council some time ago. Matt and I have been, um, throwing around different other topics, uh, in preparation for this evening. Uh, one of those that I would like to see the council prioritize is police, police staffing. Um, because of the situation that we have currently with trying to fill empty positions, uh, also, all the other jurisdictions around us are having the same issues, right? In fact, they're, they're already taking our talented people to their own department. So I think that that would be a very timely and important issue for the council to get together. I would suggest the very next strategic session. Uh, Paul can come, Chief Angel can come and talk about his issues, um, and the challenges that the department is facing, and we can come up with maybe some solutions that we can present, uh, and start to pursue. But we also have this, this list that we can pull from, and, uh, what I would suggest is we set the next meeting for police staffing as a discussion, and then come with ideas and narrow this, this list down to four or five things that we can get on the schedule for the next quarterly sessions.
I think that would be good. And when the chief presented the program, when was it, last meeting or the meeting before, about the paid cadet program, it's like, oh, I didn't know there was such a thing, that you could do such a thing. And you probably are aware of other things that I'm not aware of. So I would love to hear. Yeah, because, yeah, staffing is an issue.
We actually, we actually received good news on that front. Isn't that correct?
Yes, um, the grant has been modified. Uh, when it originally came out for the twenty-four thousand dollars for the troop, only four thousand could be placed towards wages and then up to twenty thousand could be used for academy costs. The state has, um, modified that, so the government agency is going to receive the full twenty-four thousand dollars to use as needed. So, uh, Grand Valley's Academy runs between eight and nine thousand dollars, so we'll be able to put the additional funds for wages.
That is, that's crazy. That's good to see when government does something to make it easier and that's, that's really good.
Yeah. I was just gonna ask, and I can't recall, is, is, are the lease contracts up for review this year in negotiation? Is that, is that this year?
It expires in June thirty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. So I wasn't sure if this would, conversation would tie in with contract negotiations potentially this year. Doesn't sound like it. Obviously something we need to talk about anyway, but.
Anything that we can get on the books that we are comfortable with pursuing or direction to myself and chief on how to handle that will be good sooner rather than later so we can start those discussions with the, the members.
Do we do, um, I know we've lost some officers, do we do exit interviews with our, our staff that leave?
We do in eternal, I believe, uh, Jan is doing them now citywide too.
Okay. I mean, it'd be interesting to see kind of from the department's perspective, the officer's perspective, kind of, you know, what's working, what's not working, you know, how can we make their work experience, you know? I mean, I'm sure it's good, but make it, you know, what is it that would make it more attractive or help with recruitment or whatever? Not just people leaving, but even the people that are here too. I'd love to hear what their thoughts are. I mean, I'm sure it's not what's paid, but it can't be all paid. I'm sure there must be other things too that we can address potentially with staffing.
Well, you, you'll recall, Josh, that, uh, in the chief's, uh, annual report, he had done the SWOT analysis with, uh, the employees and the police department and the biggest, the biggest issue came down to money. So, I mean, that's, that's what we're dealing with. And, uh, so we gotta, we gotta figure out how we can bring our officers, you know, up in pay that's comparable to everybody else around in West Michigan.
Because like Dennis said, that's even a housing issue. You have to have a safe city or people aren't gonna want to live here, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the housing discussion really is kind of the whole ecosystem. I mean, it's your public safety, it's your roads, it's your infrastructure, it's your parks, you know, it's all those things. It's your, you know, people taking pride in their neighborhoods and, you know, keeping their properties up. It's making sure that, you know, we've got good code enforcement for things, you know, so people, you know, have safe neighborhoods and it's, yeah, a lot of different factors that we have to address.
You know, when I looked at the list of potential topics, there's some of them that we've, we've started on, like the tree canopy effort. Okay, you know, we're not where we want to be, but we've certainly got a plan in place. So it'll be interesting to look at this and there's always room and, and new topics like police staffing.
Chair, I'm sorry. You know, it, it sounds neat when you put it in a box that we could talk about this quarterly, but why do we have to wait till June to talk about this? Can we move it up in the agenda? I mean, the, the police, you know, staffing issue isn't gonna get, probably isn't gonna get better by June, um, like magically. What's that? Yeah. So, so do we move this up and, you know, and, and, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a lot of topics that maybe we could talk about, and they're all very important, but, you know, why wait till June?
And I think, you know, we've really, even this conversation, which I feel like we've got quite a bit of input, it was only a half hour or whatever.
Right.
And so, yeah, I mean, it could be really anytime that is not a heavy agenda, probably.
Yeah. That was first, I'm, I know I'm glad you, you said that, Dennis, too. That, that was one of my things when I was thinking about what other topics can we talk about? That was one of them, and I'm glad you brought it up, but I would hate to see us wait till June just because it's, fits into a calendar, you know?
I think, right now, the, what, what staff is working on is trying to get through to the budget and get that moving along. And when we have some breathing room there, we can start scheduling these things as we go. Maybe even if there's some important ones, we can go meeting, meeting, meeting. It's, a half an hour discussion is not that big a deal.
That's fair. I know you guys are working very hard on the budget, so that's absolutely fair.
Any other comments? Okay. Council member comments. JR, we'll start with you tonight.
The annual report, awesome. So cool to see. Thanks, oh, as always, for doing that, putting time into that. Um, the awards that you guys give out too, between both the police and the fire, um, I love to see that. I always feel disappointed that I didn't know that it was happening, you know, to, to show up at City Hall and do that. So if there's a way that we can just get shot an email of when those awards are happening, um, whether we can make it or not, just to always know about it, I think that would be, um, a, a nice, a nice ad for council to be there. And obviously, kudos to my environmental people. Um, thanks for coming to presenting. And I always say this, that we are one of the few committees that does present annually to the council. And so for the rest of the subcommittees that we're on, that's an encouragement to say, we love to hear from all of the subcommittees. So if you have other presentations to give, that's great, but team, well done. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I'll just echo some of those comments. I also had regret for missing that, uh, that we didn't know about it ahead of time. Um, I think it's, be nice to be informed that didn't give us the option, uh, of going or not. Um, thank you to all here who are serving on, uh, on our committees. That's just about everybody in our audience here tonight. Thank you so much. Um, we really rely on you and depend on you, and we appreciate you. Um, thanks again. Yeah, I also like the reports. Um, I don't have anything else to call out on that. Um, I do want to just, uh, say I'm so pleased about our property acquisition, though, picking up six acres along Buck Creek. That was, that's a job well done. And once again, I, I commend the mayor for, uh, for being so on the ball and, and noticing that property up for sale.
Well, thank you for Dennis, for also.
And for city staff, yes.
And for everybody who was able to get to the meeting.
Yeah. Long, just right. Thanks.
Yeah, I wasn't here last meeting, and maybe this was mentioned, but, uh, I want to say my, uh, congrats to Teresa, uh, for her new appointment and kudos to the DDA for selecting her. Uh, thanks, Chief May. That, that report was outstanding, really enjoyed reading it. Thanks Sustainability Committee for your presentation and all your work. Um, Jane, I don't know if we always get a five-year, uh, capital plan, uh, projection, but anyway, it's the first time I paid close attention to it, so thank you for putting that together. And a question for you, with the, uh, the assessments of all the property going up approximately five percent, um, does that need more money for us, uh, that, that we have to use, or is it gonna be used because we have higher expenses?
Both.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we're, we are not the only, um, victim of, uh, inflation. So, yes, while the inflation has gone up, property values have gone up because of that. However, all of our costs have gone up.
Okay.
I mean, just like everybody else.
All right.
Um, local units are not immune to inflation. So unfortunately, it is a nice offset to the inflated costs of everything.
Okay. All right. And next week, we're getting together to start the budgeting process? Is that correct?
What day do we have to schedule?
Monday.
Next Monday at six? Yep.
Do we get a budget to look at ahead of time?
Yes, you will.
Dropping it off? Are you having it delivered or online or?
I'm not sure this is, this is the venue to talk about this, but, um, being new, I, what I've heard is that the first night is spent specifically looking at the general fund, and then the second go-around is smaller funds and the enterprise funds. And so, um, my plan is to have, um, a spread, like a, a report of my spreadsheet to all the council people before, beforehand. It's, I'm hoping that you'll have it by Friday. That's my goal.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, no. I, I don't know what's normal, so.
Wasn't sure what to expect. I want to make sure we were planning on Monday. I thought that was the case.
Yes, we're planning on Monday, and there will be a draft of the general fund to look at. It is, I know, it will, I know we need to be finished because I'm sure you all have input.
Okay.
So the, the goal is to have documentation for you to be able to have a general fund budget discussion, um, Monday, March twenty.
I did appreciate having the five-year plan in advance too, yeah.
My preference would be ten, but we're getting there, so.
Okay, thank you for the preview.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm not gonna criticize you like Josh did. Um, I'm just kidding, just kidding. I'm just kidding. I was just gonna say the normal is whatever you do, so we appreciate it, you know, ahead of time. So thank you very much. I'm just kidding to Josh, but, um, I appreciate that. I felt like so many times tonight, the comments that I wanted to make were already being made. So, um, one of the things I thought, okay, well, finally I'll be able to say something no one else is saying, and that was on police staffing, and then Dennis stole that one too. But I'm really glad that that's on the radar because it's come across, um, it came across through your note, it's come across through many of the chief's communications. This is a really big issue we need to address, so I'm glad that that is a top priority. Like everyone else has said, I really appreciate the reports that were in here, the awards ceremony, a lot of awesome things happening with public safety in our city. So that's great to see and to read. Um, and then, as everyone else has said, but I'll say it as well, thank you to all the members of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, those who are here, as well as those who aren't, um, for all of your work. I do think as we start to do some of this, um, strategic planning session work, we should be mindful of trying to include as much as possible, if you guys are available, that you could attend some of those meetings so that as we're talking about, um, buffer zones in Buck Creek or green infrastructure, that we have your presence here because oftentimes you know more about it than us, and it doesn't make sense for us to be discussing that in isolation. and it doesn't make sense for us to be discussing that in isolation. So it'd be great to have you guys if you can make it, but thank you so much for being here tonight. And that's all I have.
All right, yeah, I really, I really didn't mean to put you on the spot. I hope you don't feel like I was criticizing you. I was just not sure what to expect for Monday in preparation for the meetings.
I was looking to all of you two to kind of give me some guidance as to what your preference is. I mean, it's your discussion. This is your budget, so.
Yeah. Well, it's our first year working with you two on it, so we'll figure it out together, what works best, so, thank you. I was also gonna just mention, congratulations to the police department. Appreciated reading about the different awards. Appreciated reading the fire department's report as well. Also appreciate getting the gazette that's distributed among city staff from Jana in our email too. We've gotten those for a little while now, but it's interesting to read about what's going on, you know, with new hires and just, you know, general things about, you know, staff in, in the city. So it's nice to be included in those distributions, so we can, you know, see what, what else is going on, you know, among the team that we don't always see in our meetings every time, so appreciate that.
Randy?
Well, I, I always say what's normal, but, you know. Because it changes. It's always.
It's by the scale.
Yeah, exactly. But other than that, I just, I just want to say thanks to the departments and the committees and just all of the, we, just all the minutes and just a lot of really good information. And there really are tremendous amount of people, the citizens, staff, that work really hard for this city to make Granville whatever really is. It's easy to sit up here, but it's, a lot of that work is done out there in the trenches and good people, so thank you, everybody, for all the reports and stuff.
I look forward to the budget process. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be gone. I think JR also. And so Randy is gonna be chairing that meeting and then we can get together hopefully maybe before the meeting or right after?
I think right after, but you'll, you'll get the information at the same time, so if there's anything that jumps right out at you that you'd like shared with the group, feel free.
Okay, great. The other thing, got some good news. Congratulations for two thousand twenty-two Tree City USA application has been approved, so I think this is seventh year, maybe? So that's good news. We're still getting some more information. We also applied for a growth award, but they, our day needs a little bit more information about that. One of the things that we've applied for points was the art and chocolate walk and the tree board being involved in that and they wanted to know who attended. I'm like, well, there were like three thousand people, so maybe I have some pictures. I don't know, so. And so anyway, we're gonna clarify those kind of things, so. Good. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.